Yeah, cars. Oh, not breaking, just cutting the car, breaking the cars.
It was weird. Hi. Yes, we are here. Are we ready to go? Okay, well, we are on board here. I welcome to the Thursday, July 27th public hearing to consider an increase to the current sewer plant project by I'm here. Before I put the gavel down to start the public hearing, I just felt that for the people watching at home live, or if they watch this in the future on tape, and certainly for the people in attendance tonight, that a couple of things just that might help. First, and Charlie, I hope you'll help me on this, from a law standpoint, three weeks ago, the town board did a resolution to advertise this public hearing, and per the law, it was in the Webster Herald's July 12th edition, which that was 15 days ago, no less than 10 days, no more than 20 days to advertise legally such a thing. I also want to make sure anybody who plans on speaking tonight or at home, who has read the published public hearing, that initially, three weeks ago, we had it from 44 million to 90 million over the last three weeks through counsel of our bond counsel, Charlie, through municipal solutions, our body consultant, we have redacted that, I'll call it, or reduced it down to 81.5 million. Simply said, the items of the collection system, pump station, Vassburg, and all their conveyance pipes, collection pipes, were dropped out of this project to keep it isolated down to the sewer plant and the treatment alone. Now, some rules of engagement on a public hearing. When I put the hammer down, we'll open it, and then the speakers will be able to take the podium in the order that they have signed in tonight. I really would hope that we have some acumen from a standpoint why the speaker is at the podium, that there, anybody in attendance, there wouldn't be any talking, or when they're done, any cheering, or booing, or any of that type of thing. Each speaker will be given a five-minute maximum up on the podium. I will give a 30-second warning that you're getting close to that five minutes. Once all the speakers that have signed in have been heard from, I'll put the gavel down and close the public hearing. At that point, the board members will can talk about this potential resolution, questions, answers, but the public comment period at that time is closed. I really want to make sure people in attendance understand that. Now, the two resolutions that are potentially going to be voted on tonight, one is the 202B approval resolution, which in layman terms, Charlie, I think is a resolution that says that the increase is for the public...
You know what?
Yes.
And it's being done by the town board. The town board is doing it on its own motion, it's not doing it as a result of petition request.
Exactly. And then the second one is the actual mandatory bonding of the project from its current 44 million to 81 and a half million. Last but not least, and we'll get going, if we moved on those two resolutions tonight, and if those two resolutions are approved by the town board, which by law has to be two-thirds of the board for this type of resolution, which when you have a board of five, a supermajority per se is a four to one or five-nothing vote, at that point, the CFA deadline for grant applications in New York this year, WEA and some others, was scheduled as July 28th. And that, we've tried to communicate why the timing of this being Thursday, July 27th, there probably will never be a better time to get the attention of the various grant agencies in New York State than right now with what's going on in Webster. The plan is to apply for three grants, a WQIP, which I think is water quality, for the maximum $10 million, ESD, which is economic, what have you, Empire State Development, for $5 million, and then the one that is most commensurate with sewer plants, and the one that we got for Phase One a few years ago, when we did the $12 million secondary clarifier asset renewal project, is the WEA grant. Now, the WEA grant's very interesting because back when it was awarded to the town on Phase One, the $12 million secondary clarifiers, the parameters of that grant was 25% of the project with a maximum of $5 million. A couple of years ago, WEA expanded it from being a 25% maximum, but no cap at $5 million. So, one of the things that if this is an $81 million bonding proposal, the project in essence is $81 million. WEA can consider us for the max of 25% at what is essentially $20.5 million. One last thing on that. Last September 9th, WEA, that was the deadline for last year's WEA grant application, and we made that grant application. We were not awarded it. Didn't really surprise us because it's the same thing that happened on Phase One. This is often, you don't get the award at the first run because you've got to get closer and closer to shovel-ready and groundbreaking, and a little premature, but you've got to get in line for those things. When we applied last September 9th, we had 11 letters of support from various local politicians and, I'll say, muckety-mucks. Right now, as we get ready for tomorrow's deadline, we are at about 47 letters of support. Now, some of those letters of support for this project are coming from Senator Schumer's office, hopefully Senator Gillibrand's office, Congressman Morelli's office, Adam Bellow, some people that wouldn't have, we wouldn't have even approached last year for letters of support because the project last year did not have the aspects that are going on in Webster right now, where those people of those high categories would make letters of support. So, I think that's very important to also note. Last but not least, if these two resolutions pass tonight, I think both, Charlie, are subject to permissive referendum, which without getting into too much detail, the way our government works, we are a representative republic. Citizens vote for their leadership, they voted for us, we make a five-town board member vote on things like this. There, we, this is a great country. There is a lever per se for the citizens to rise up and say, you know what, we don't like that vote. So, they can go out and get approximately 1,200 signatures of Webster residents who are registered voters within 30 days to essentially say, we disagree with that town board's decision, we would like it to go to a town-wide vote. And that is always something that citizens cannot foreknow. They don't happen too often, I guess, and really, the parameters around them are better to be vetted through the Board of Elections. I said 1,200 signatures, I think it's an equation based on the last gubernatorial election and all of that stuff. So, that, and I apologize, is a very long preface, but I'm hoping that for people watching at home, people watching the tape, people in the audience tonight, it may affect what they were or weren't going to say in the public hearing. So, without any further ado, I am going to open the public hearing. And, yes, our first...
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hattaway. And it's just doing the world.
This is real.
Present. Wait a minute, what? In present.
I agree.
Attorney Genetti.
Present.
Supervisor Clary.
Here.
Councilmember Cahill.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Okay. And because, you know what, and I have opened it, but what the heck, we are going to say the Pledge of Allegiance before we get to our first speaker.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we've already done the roll, so our first person who signed in tonight, and I tell the people that did sign in, if you decide you don't want to speak, just wave us off and we get to your name. So, the first person signed in is Lori Reynolds.
I'm going to wait. I thought this was the Fairlife presentation.
Okay. She was, thought it was the Coca-Cola Fairlife public hearing for the zoning board, zoning board, town board, so.
Thank you.
Greg Chamber.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for the opportunity to comment on the town sewer plant situation. My name is Greg Shambry. I own and operate Maplewood Nursing Home located here in Webster. I've served for a number of years as advisor to the Board of Webster Economic Development Alliance, and I've also had some appreciation and understanding for the sewer plant situation, having served on both former committees that looked at the factors involved in the possibility of combining the town and village sewer plants. There've been a variety of articles and opinion pieces written about this topic. I believe they've been and can be much more effective in describing some of the technical aspects of this decision than I can, so I'll stay away from that. As we all know, this is a very unusual situation. Most towns, a long time ago, connected to pure waters and got rid of their sewage treatment plants. By doing so, they not only got rid of the headache of owning and running a plant, but also paved the way for avoiding a community growth capacity limitation due to the sewer. I sympathize with our situation and the unenviable decision we now face. Nonetheless, a decision is at hand. Webster will be making the choice between severely limiting its ability to grow the commercial and residential tax base, or accepting a much higher bonding amount to support capacity and anticipated additional revenue to offset increasing tax bills. In my mind, this is not our decision. We must take the risk and move ahead with bonding the increased amount. Although not of our doing, like it or not, Webster is in the sewage treatment business. The simple fact is that being in the sewer business requires a capacity that is scaled to existing and the future needs of a given community. If we have limited or no capacity, we no longer have community growth opportunities to sell. It not only affects the actual revenue stream that will come from the sewer plant, but also affects the ability to obtain revenue from community growth. Limited sewer capacity means that Webster will not be able to consider a large slice of industrial and commercial growth moving forward. In the worst case, it will affect future residential growth as well. Some look at this situation exclusively as being about the Coca-Cola company coming to town and needing this capacity. It is true that if we vote this expansion down, we lose the Fairlife project. Beyond this current project that has brought the issue to a head, there's a lot more at stake here than just the Fairlife Coca-Cola project. This latest project will be the first of many opportunities and challenges ahead as we deal with potential new uses at the Xerox property and other situations. In conclusion, I'm in favor of upgrading the Webster sewer plant capacity. It is said that perfection is the enemy of success. We will never have all the payback data and information that will make everyone comfortable. There will always be risk and uncertainty in any business venture, including this one. It is the nature of the beast. I recommend this path for the sake of this pending Fairlife project, and more importantly, to give the opportunity for our community to be, excuse me, to give the opportunity for our community to be able to entertain future commercial and residential offsets. Payback of any bonding that would be shouldered strictly by the existing commercial and residential taxpayers creates a static pool of payers, and thus, an ever-increasing hardship for them. I think it's important to make the right choice here and leave the door open for the future of Webster.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you for the opportunity. Matt Chatfield, 62 Park Avenue, 104 Village Webster, and I'm also the executive director of the Webster Economic Development Alliance. I have some prepared remarks. So, I've had the benefit, where the past several years have been educated on the proposed sewer treatment facility and the proposed project and the improvements that are going to be made. It's been contemplated for several years, and based upon all the information that I have that's been related to me, the improvements are much needed. My perspective is that this project will not only improve the performance of the plant, but will also improve the plant's ability to support and serve commercial, industrial, and agricultural businesses both within and outside of the town. And the benefit to that is by serving businesses outside of the town, it brings, generates additional revenue to help support and offset some of that desert. These improvements will make our Webster facility unique within our region, and not only a great benefit to our citizens, but a true economic development asset to our community. In particular, the future plant's ability to accept and treat biosolids will also create that, create a beneficial fertilizer product that will generate revenue and support our agricultural community. Lastly, the proposed project and its anticipated methods have already borne fruit with the selection of Webster by Coca-Cola as the future location of its newest Fairlife dairy production facility. It was because of the proposed improvements that are a part of this facility that Webster was selected. You know, and we are basically selected to be host of this generational investment, $650 million. It's my opinion that the town must approve the bonding associated with this project to ensure that our community has the infrastructure available to support future growth and continued prosperity. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Dave Wolbre.
My name's Dave Wolbre. I live at 714 Cargill Circle. Before I start, let me say that I am in favor of the Fairlife Coke project. I have nothing against that, but I have some concerns. First concern is the amount of the bond, $81.5 million, to be borne by the taxpayers of the town of Webster that are on the town-wide sewer system. The village hasn't paid for any of this. I understand the sewer plant needed upgrades. We started out with a bond for $33 million. That was revised upwards to $44 million, and now the board is asking for $81.5 million. Another increase of $37.5 million, 14 million of which is due to the increase in capacity to support Fairlife project. Through past correspondence with the supervisor, I understand that Fairlife has agreed in principle to cover this 14 million. Does the town have anything in writing at this point? Any contracts signed, any agreements in place to pay this 14 million dollars? How will Fairlife pay for this 14 million dollars? Will it pay before the bond is taken out, thereby reducing the cost of the bond? If I subtract the 14 million from 81.5 million, the result is 67.5 million, which is 23.5 million higher than the first division, and 34.5 million higher than the original bond resolution, more than two times that of the original bond resolution. How do you explain the second increase of 23.5 million dollars that is not due to the Fairlife project? I want to know, you know, how do we, where does this 23.5 million go? My second concern is how the board plans to pay for the bond. Absent the Fairlife project, the cost to every taxpayer and on Webster's sewer system will be well over an additional $300 a year, on top of the present O and M that is approximately $232 a year. The supervisor in one of his columns has stated that with the Fairlife project increase could be held to $70 a year for the next 20 years or so. Bringing the total cost to taxpayers to around $300 a year, he is combining the O and M, which covers operating costs, labor, maintenance, chemicals, and other incidentals, with the capital portion of the bill, capital being used to pay for equipment upgrades, new equipment, et cetera. So, how is this possible? Two primary ways. First, a reduction in operating costs, all well and good, efficiencies in energy, and second, the elimination of landfill costs associated with trucking, saving trucking costs and landfill costs by selling dried sewage as fertilizer. That portion of the technology is or was somewhere around $11 million in the first bond issue. The revenue from the discharge from the Fairlife project that should properly go towards O and M and not capital, that this is the revenue that gained from the discharge to the sewer system based on the water intake into the plant. I believe these are dangerous assumptions that could place taxpayers, approximately 16,000 of us, on the hook for up to $67.5 million, assuming Fairlife picks up the remainder of the 81.5. What if flow is, what if the flow used to calculate the sewer charges for Fairlife does not materialize? I understand they will have a pretreatment system. What is to say that in the future, a portion of that pretreatment...
Dave, we're at 30 seconds.
...will allow reuse of water, or efficiency in the process reduces the demand for water upon, you got me all messed up here. After some research on the internet, I found several articles discussing the contaminants that are found in sewage. PFOS and PFOAs are most concerning because they are showing up in dried sewage sold as commercial fertilizers. Should we be contaminating our farmland and home gardens with these dangers from forever chemicals? These chemicals have been banned in the United States, but they're imported from other countries. The state demand is already outlawed, the practice of driving...
Dave, you're at 5 minutes and 15 seconds now, so...
Okay, I'll let it go with that. I think I covered the basic points.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up is Bill Clippeno.
My name is Bill Clippeno. I live in 14 Magnolia Lane at Willow Point. My background here is as a school principal in Reese for 30 years, and to be part of the discussion like you folks are having about whether you build a school or not, I was there during the time of rapid growth in the community, and these are the kinds of decisions that were part of our future look at what it was that we were going to have to provide. The details that have been shared, and when I looked at the Webster Herald and read what was written this last week, unfortunately, there've been other editorials that are pretty damning to the community and don't help residents at all. There are several concepts that I think are most important, and that is, one of them is making sure that we aren't short-sighted. Whenever we're going to grow, the only way we can grow is to put something in place as a foundation for growth to occur. Webster is growing, it will continue to grow. There will be other industries, manufacturing plants, et cetera. We've got lots of land, and there's no question that those lands will be used by industries in the future that will probably draw on the system. It may have a little bit of a margin, a surplus from the bond that is proposed. I am in favor of the bond. I'm in favor of your vote to approve, and Fairlife is really secondary to the issue because I went on the tour of the plant, I don't know how many of you have, but it's patched together, other than the fact that I couldn't breathe for three days, but it's patched together. I can't imagine how the team there is able to manage with how things are placed, the inefficiency of the project as it currently exists, and the efficiency aspect alone is definitely required. The revenue that will come in, and the last gentleman spoke about fertilizer and all, there are ways around all of that, and there's no reason to get into that here, but there are income streams and taxes and all of the other benefits that come from valuing an industry in our area. We've done it with others, we can do it with Fairlife, and more importantly, we can do it for the residents of the community who require good service and good equipment to keep that service operating in full steam. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Phil. Rick, did we have, did we have a little less? I know that... No. No? Oh, do you want to talk?
Yeah, I can, can I change my mind?
You can change your mind around the west side.
We are talking about Fairlife.
Lori Reynolds.
Evening. My name is Lori Reynolds. I am the chair of Webster Citizen Action League, also known as WECALE. I am representing them tonight. Our organization was formed 10 years ago to be the eyes and ears and the advocate for Webster residents. We do this by attending non-local government meetings and videotaping them and making them available to Webster residents on our Facebook page and website. We favor open, transparent government, and have tried to keep our local leaders accountable to the people they serve. We know that with all the monies that are being bonded in the town at this time, current taxpayers and future taxpayers of Webster will rear the burden. Because of this, their voices should be heard. Our town government needs to be very open about how the massive Fairlife project will benefit Webster, benefit Webster. In other words, how will this improve life for us here in Webster? We need much more transparency from our leaders and how this project will affect us. With all the risks Webster is taking, what will be the cost and the benefits to Webster residents? I'm talking... I'm talking about all the monies, you know, you've been allowing to go out for this and that and this and that, and you know what I'm talking about. And all the different projects that are going on, you're considering the hamlet. Where's the money going to come from? It's residents, the people you are serving. As always, residents are free to check out our Facebook page and see what Webster Citizen National League is all about. Please email us, which you will find on our Facebook page if you would like to join our effort and keep your Webster where life is worth living. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Okay, unless the bean is hiding with somebody. Don't think there's any other speech in the public, so unless anybody looks at it, Jackson, I'm going to close the public comment portion of this hearing. Well, before we move on to discussing, it looks like there's some help from you on this, potential resolutions associated with this. I'd certainly want to hear any questions, comments from the board. Bill?
I've done a lot of research on the project. Our sewer treatment plant is sixty-something years old now at this point. It's beyond repair in a lot of places. We need, we needed phase one, we need phase two. And you have to look at the future. Where are we going to be ten or twenty years from now? Do we have to do another addition again? Let's try and get everything accomplished we can now. It's been planned for the future in that process.
Well, as ladies, I'm in the sewer department. I certainly know the challenges that they faced in the past few years. And we all saw photos and video of the challenges that they faced just today. And I guess, as Abbott said, we are beyond the point where we can really replace and repair. It's so old that parts can't even get parts for it. I really appreciate the speakers tonight and talking about the future of Webster because that's really what we're looking at. We're looking at an investment in our town. And I think that it's a very important project. I won't shy away from that, but we've all on this floor lost a little sleep a night or two when we've looked at some of these numbers, believing we understand the gravity of this. But as I said, I do think that it is important and we are marrying a good investment here.
Okay.
I understand this is a big, you know, it's a colossal project. And it's an investment for everyone. And this, I have an opportunity, we, you know, this meeting with Anna and everything else. This may be a little bit outside of this, but I just want to say. And Val Camita and Jeff, you know, we started on Harris Beach. And I explained all the answer. I mean, we don't make a decision slightly. We do a lot of research and so that we can get the best solution in terms for our community, our constituents. And like I said, this project will put us back, you know, Webster back on the map. And it's opening the door of our future economic and industrial development in Webster. And it will be a win-win situation for everyone. So, and like I said, you know, we are trying to be transparent as possible. You have any questions, we're here. So please come and ask. And I know that supervisor Larry will have most days, so.
Oh, we are transparent enough to tell people when we don't have answers.
You're right. And that's, that's, that's fair enough. And, you know, there's not a doubt in anyone's mind on this board that upgrades to the sewer treatment plant are badly needed out there today. The ingenuity of the team out there to repair things is incredible. They, they have old parts that break and they keep part of the old parts. That's the situation that this sewer treatment plant is in and that they deal with on a weekly basis. So, you know, kudos to your team heart and what you had to deal with for years now. Now, with respect to the phase two upgrades, absolutely needed. And, you know, I work in construction, so I, I see the, the price escalation in the last two years is incredible. We've been adjusted two years ago, we're still not done with. And we did a material cost analysis. Some of these materials have doubled the cost. So I, I see that, okay? And then Fairlife comes in. We go from, you know, forty million to eighty-one million. And here, people are right to be concerned. How are we going to pay for this? How involved is Fairlife? I've had these questions. I've sat with the supervisor, with the director of finances two days ago to talk about these things. And there's so many moving parts right now. But we're at the scape, we're at the stage where, okay, we need to bond this money, which doesn't mean we have to spend it, okay? But we need to do this to apply for our grants. And I'm completely in favor of doing these grants. Because we need to do the repairs and upgrades and expansion of the sewer treatment plant. And this, this literally happened. I was up there today. So Art was showing me the auger area that they replaced, repaired the auger. And it's, the auger goes through a pipe like this. And the underneath of the pipe was literally a piece of gum holding it from leaking. I, I'm not kidding. That's the condition that they've been dealing with for years. Because in my mind, strategic planning was not done twenty years ago and ten years ago. You can't, you want a sewer treatment plant with so many moving parts and have the knowledge of the life of a pump or auger and not put one aside? Because if you don't, you're in a situation that we're in right now. Well, I just think, and I appreciate everybody that spoke tonight, especially the people that have questions and concerns. I would say three things really quick. One, I want to make sure that I understand is the last three big projects in town that have bonded resolutions. Back in seventeen, phase one of the asset renewal of the sewer plant got bonded for twelve million dollars. To John's point, that doesn't mean you're going to go into debt for twelve million dollars because we got a three million dollar月下 grant. So we really only, and I think we didn't end up going into debt for nine million, the way it all worked in reserves and all that. Came in under budget and came in on time. Then about a year or two ago, we did the nine and a half million dollar bonding of Sandbar Park. I had a lesson taught to me about municipal law. I'm like, why are we bonding for nine and a half million when we already got five million dollars in grants? We know we're not going to spend nine and a half million. And, and I was taught that that's the way the system works. You have to bond it to the estimated total cost of the project. Doesn't matter what kind of funding you have already in the bank in grants. And then last but not least, and it was in the paper today or yesterday, was it back in February of this year, just five months ago? There was a lot of, you know, airing and whatever, but I can't believe this board. We're going to get twenty-eight million dollars for bonding the new highway garage. And we said at that point, that doesn't mean we're going to go into debt twenty-eight million. Here we are, five months out, and the project's actual contracts and what we're going to accept next week, we're five and a half million dollars better than that twenty-eight million. We're already starting from that point. So we have a track record of these bonding resolutions, which are part of municipal law to move things along and show that we, as a town board, have skin in the game and show the world that we're serious about moving this project along. But I think the town has done a very good job of managing those projects and maximizing grants. And I'm going to say it again. I just told you earlier, we're applying for thirty-five million dollars in grants on this project. And we will never, ever be in a position to have this much attention from the state to award us the maximum. I'll make the other two things very quick. I realize my sin is verboce. The only person that said something tonight that hurt me was Lori Reynolds. Transparency, transparency. Well, I really pride myself on over-communicating to the community and trying to find ways to communicate, being transparent. And so I did a little research today, well, the last couple of days. I took the last hundred Webster Herald's since June of two thousand twenty-one, when the village board, where Lori lived in the village, decided to not regionalize with the town sewer plant. And since then, since the village decided to go their separate way, which is their prerogative, there has been one village board agenda that's been published in the Webster Herald that has addressed what they're doing on their sewer plant. There were sixty-one out of one hundred of our board agendas and workshops dedicated to this, to the sewer plant, not Fairlife, to the sewer plant. I don't know how much more transparent we can be. I don't know how much more robust you can be than that. Because to Dave Walrob's point, and we can have fun with numbers all day long, how do you get thirty-one million? Which by the way, it was thirty-one million that Art La Judas stood up there two years ago on a per, whatever the hell that stands for in engineering. What is that? A ten-thousand-foot look bill, right? And they told us at that time, in more words or less, your asset renewal. Just fixing the assets, no revenue and costs at thirty-one million. We said, wow, that's, that's a problem, this and that. And then we looked into energy performance contracts and all of a sudden, it was like, well, if we get without that technology, that can help pay for itself and kick off cash flow to cover some of the asset renewal. Now, as John said, the, the moving target the last two years has been inflation, this and that. And where did we end up at? We ended up at with thirty-eight million asset renewal up from the thirty-one million. We haven't found yet a number. Twenty-nine million is technology, has nothing to do with Fairlife. We, we've talked about that technology ad nauseam. Sixty-one out of a hundred meetings. We have proven, shown all of the revenues and the guarantees that energy performance does. You want to do the thirty-eight million asset renewal and take the gum off the auger? We can do that. Your EDU is going to be five hundred dollars. No doubt. O and M, capital, however you want to slice and dice it. Now, we do the technology and then serendipitously, but I do believe luck is the residue of design. I think Coke picked us because thankfully, we had the foresight two years ago to take a look at energy performance contracts, to take a look at that technology that could help us offset cost, build revenue, take us out of the risk of landfills that might be five states away, that our sludge hauling at a half a million dollars a year right now might go to three million. Thankfully, we had the foresight to look at that and research it and be the doubting Thomases and put our fingers in sixty-one out of a hundred meetings. And because of that, when Coca-Cola Fairlife came along and was picking forty different sites from Indiana and Pennsylvania, it looked and said, and I don't know if you knew this or not, but a dairy product is, really looks at sewer. And they said, well, wait a minute. You guys are down the road on this technology thing and we will be two miles away from that. I, I have to tell you, if there's a hundred reasons why Coke picked us and we have to do a regression equation to wait, what was one of the biggest reasons they picked us? No doubt, it's the sewer. And not because we picked, fixed the secondary clarifiers for twelve million and not because of thirty-eight million of asset renewal. That's not going to do it for them. So yes, they come along two and a half months ago and say that and we got to run back and say, hey, what do we do? Do we just go with the asset renewal of thirty-eight million? And the twenty-nine million of technology, which ad nauseam, we have shown everybody under the sun transparently, if they've been paying attention. We decided to take a look at how we could do it with that. It's fourteen million to go from five million gallons a day to seven million. And Dave, to your question, no, we do not have something in writing that irrefutably says they're paying the fourteen million because Charlie and our bond counsel at Harris Beach and their counsel at Coca-Cola, Barclay Damon, are trying to paper this up so that it's a legal document where we can get that money. Because we can't just give them municipal bonds because that's illegal. You can't give a private company your municipal bonds.
I understand that. How are they going to pay it back?
You don't get to talk. And I'm not, you know what? If people watch this and say it's rude, you're done. So we have, we have vetted this. We have vetted this and.
You didn't answer my question about the twenty-five million.
Asked you about acting. So here we are at thirty-eight million asset renewal, twenty-nine million technology and fourteen million to upsize to have Coca-Cola. And here we are in an opportunity with almost fifty letters of support, which heretofore we would get ten, and in a position possibly to get the most grants we will ever be in a position to. And I say that all because it's kind of a no-brainer because once we do this, there's no guarantee that Coca-Cola Fairlife ever comes to town because there's a lot of things that could happen after this that have nothing to do with this town board that could squirrel that deal. And I assure you, if it does, then we will back off on the fourteen million because they're not coming to town. Is that correct, Art and Rep? I mean, based on the construction timeframe and all that, then we're not, we're not bound to this eighty-one million. Well, I mean, we want to put ourselves in a position to keep the process going with them. So that's what that does tonight. So I apologize. I probably overspoke it. I chased Dave Walrob out of the room. One thing he didn't get a chance to tell you is the guy emails me three times a week. And you know what I do three times a week? I answer him.
And you share that moment?
And I share it with the board. And he is set. He's never had a supervisor that is as responsive to his questions. And I just told him out there, Dave, you, you are a godsend to me because you ask good questions and you give me the opportunity to give good answers as best I can. And then I can share it with the board saying, hey, if Dave Walrob's asking these questions, maybe constituents are going to talk to you at the doorstep about these. Here's the Q and the A for you. So.
I also just want to add, because I think to those who are watching, remain tuned in after you explain how this was, how the hearing would go. Perhaps you did though today. But the fact is, the public hearing, you have an opportunity to speak. And once the public hearing is closed, there isn't an opportunity for the, for the people who are in attendance to speak anymore. So that's really great.
Yes, it was. And I said at the beginning, once it closes, you can't come to cheap seats.
You let it go long.
You're done. So anyway, with that being said, I am going to help my Latin-speaking friend, Charlie Janesey, will help me with these two resolutions. Because based on what the board has said and what I just said.
You've got two resolutions, Mr. Supervisor. The first is basically the resolution to authorize the further increase. And that, and we're not talking about bonding, we're talking about the improvements that are to be done to the wastewater treatment plant, the water recovery, water resource recovery facility, I should say. The resolution being offered is based on the fact that there was a resolution back in two thousand twenty-one, resolution of the two fifty-nine adopted September sixteenth of two thousand twenty-one, which approved certain improvements to the consolidated sewer district, which was the initial improvement, I think that was phase one, I believe.
No, this is actually the asset renewal that we were looking at before phase two.
Correct. And that was just, there was an improvement of the existing facility or repairs to the existing facility. the existing facility. That was adopted, and they had authorized the issuance of thirty million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, thirty-seven dollars. About a year later, there was a request by the engineers in charge of the project that because of the cost of materials and labor and the rise in those costs, there was an increase of thirteen million, three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand needed. That was Phase Two, and that was adopted and approved on September eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Since that time, there have been obvious additions and changes to the landscape, which the town board has explained partially and mainly due to the Fairlife expansion. However, the increase now is in addition to the forty-four thousand, thirty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty thousand, for a total of eighty-one thousand five hundred thousand.
Many.
I'm sorry. In any event, the request is now, I think this is now going to be called Phase Three? Is it a Phase Two here, or just a sufficient Phase Two?
Sufficient Phase Two.
Phase Two.
That being done, there was a publication of the notice of public hearing, which is held today, and the publication was on July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, and the notice was also published on the town board, or town hall, as well. Based upon that, the town board has offered a resolution to, that it is found to be in the public interest to undertake the project at the estimated maximum cost of, you said, ninety thousand?
Eighty-one million, five hundred.
Eighty-one thousand, five hundred thousand. The town is hereby authorized to undertake the project at such estimated maximum cost. The town clerk is authorized and directed to cause certified copy of the resolution to be reported to the office of the county clerk within ten days of its adoption. Resolution shall take place, take effect immediately.
That is my motion.
Supervisor Larden?
Aye.
Councilman Haye?
Aye.
Councilman Abbott?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cataldi?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jen?
Aye.
All right. Charlie, do you mind the mandatory bond resolution?
This is, this is, this is a, this is a resolution, actually, to, to increase and authorize the issuance of bonds up to eighty-one million, five hundred thousand dollars in serial bonds to undertake and pay for the improvements the town board has just approved by the prior resolution. I won't reiterate the resolution numbers. The dates stand, Phase One improvements and bonding therefore was approved back in September two thousand twenty-one. The initial Phase Two improvements and expansion due to the rising cost of materials and labor was raised by an additional thirteen million, three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand to a total of forty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-thousand, I'm sorry, three-hundred-and-forty-thousand, as described in the report submitted by the engineer, that was done September eighth, two thousand twenty-two. This is a further mandatory bond resolution being sought today to support and pay for the improvements that the town board has just, by the prior resolution approved. The seeker for this particular resolution was passed and adopted on July twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. The public hearing was ordered by the town board on July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, to be held by the state, and it was in fact held based on a vote of the town board. The improvements will commence. Now, the town board hereby resolves to amend and restate the original bond resolution in its entirety to read as follows, superseding the two prior amounts. Bond resolution of the town board of the town of Webster, New York, authorizing the issuance of up to eighty-one million, five hundred thousand serial bonds in the town to finance certain improvements to the town of Webster Consolidated Sewer District consisting of water pollution control facility, asset renewal project, and water resource recovery facility improvements. The town board of the town of Webster hereby resolves as follows. The town is authorized to issue a committee of eighty-one million, five hundred thousand principal amount serial bonds pursuant to the local finance law of the state of New York, constituted chapter thirty-three dash A of Consolidated Sewer District of the state of New York. And it is hereby determined the period of probability use for this for the aforementioned specific object of the bond is forty years pursuant to subdivision four, paragraph A of section eleven of the local finance law. The rest is pretty much boilerplate as to, as to what's needed by the bonding, by bond council, by the financing company. Supervisor is hereby authorized in sole discretion to execute a project financing and loan agreement and any other agreements with the state, the Eurostate Department of Environmental Conservation, or the Eurostate Environmental Facilities Corporation in order to effect financing or refinancing of the specific object of the bond. The supervisor of the town is also authorized to take such actions and execute such documents as may be necessary to ensure the continued status of the interest of the bonds is authorized by this resolution and any notes issued in anticipation thereof as excluded from gross income for other women to have access to. The supervisor is also further authorized in turn to continue disclosure undertakings with or for the benefit of the initial purchaser of the bonds. The intent of the resolution is to give the supervisor sufficient authority to execute these applications and to do any other similar acts necessary to effect the issuance of the course of serial bonds. The resolution shall take effect immediately. The town clerk is authorized and directed to cause a copy of the resolution or some thereof to be published. This will be published in full together with the notice attached, substantial performance as prescribed in section eighty-one, part zero of the local finance law, the official newspaper of the town for such purposes.
I want to thank you for being able to add.
Yeah.
And since several of the sections mentioned giving the supervisor authority, I will make it my motion. So Councilwoman Cataldi?
Aye.
Councilman Haye?
Aye.
Councilman Abbott?
Aye.
Councilman Wynn?
Aye.
Councilman, or, I'm sorry.
You can't vote it.
Sorry.
Should get the vote.
No.
Well, thank you all, and...
I'm going to go first.
Work has just begun, because we got a team that makes sure that we do this right by the time...
Yes, we do. The town board is going to make sure that's not...
Absolutely. That concludes tonight's meeting.
Right.
Hey, Mr. Cambry, before you go, can I grab you for literally sixty seconds and hold me there?